It's four o'clock, so I'll go in. I'm sorry, 10 o'clock, running late. So I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, Monday, March 11th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I like our four o'clock meetings because that means we're going to get paid.
I'd like to welcome everyone and thank y'all for being here this morning. First item that we have is approval of minutes. You all have before you.
A motion and a second to approve.
Discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is claims. Mr. Pettis, your name.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Is there anyone that is not with the county that needs to be heard so you all can leave? Certainly, welcome to stay. Mr. Chapa, you want your side to go before?
Yes, sir.
You'll stay?
Yeah.
Okay. If not, I guess we'll start with our reports. Gas report, Mr. Alvarado.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. My report is in your package. I really don't have much to add. JF Utility is still at its work site. He hasn't been able to finish, but he says he's going to get it. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Alvarado.
Thank you.
Next is the transfer station. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
And my financial report is going to say we're on the negative, but I would like to point out that this month is reflecting half of the payment for the tire cottage that we had to give in order for them to start building it. But that money will be reimbursed. That one, but it's reflecting here as a negative for right now. And also, some of the maintenance repaired done to the loader that's been repaired. And I wanted to ask Commissioner Gasta, if you're present, to... We might have it ready in a week or so, so you can help us out in bringing it back. I mean, I've contacted with it. We probably need the low boy for it.
Are you sure?
Yes, sir.
And you said the tire cutter was?
It was $37,000, and we had to give $17,000 so they can start building it. They build it from the ground up, from the trailer up.
And that's through the rent, so we should be getting it reimbursed?
Yeah, all that money will be reimbursed. Every penny will be reimbursed through the...
What I want to say might concern you, Commissioner Gasta. I have five rollover dumpsters that I need to get rid of. If you can use them, Commissioner Gasta has a truck. If you can use them, I need to get them out of the way.
I got the used one.
Tulu de antes?
You know the one.
All right. It's done.
Okay.
I don't need it.
I have used one.
Okay.
I'll pick them up.
Any other questions? Ms. Gonzalez.
Where are the...
Over there, but I'm preaching one.
On your office?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll send the truck to someone who has to pick them up.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Texas Assessor.
Good morning, Commissioners. In front of you, there's the package, and also, there's an extra sheet, so I can briefly explain to you what this sheet is for, and after I give out my report. The total countywide collections for February 19 were $3,518,225. On February 2018, there were $2,450,475. There was a total collection of $1,67,750 more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected $933,131 less than last year. Our total current collections for Starr County entities were $2,92,477. Current collections for the February 2018 were $1,305,385. There was a total current collection of $787,91 more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected $130,314 less than last year. Our total delinquent collections on February 19 just for Starr County were $85,728. Total delinquent collections for the 2018 were $242,868. There was a total delinquent collection of $157,140 less than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected $237,897 less than last year. As of February 28, 2019, the tax office has collected 88 percent of the projected collections. Projected collections remaining are $1,675,054.55. We are... On February 2019, I gave you... I put down a copy of the explanation as to why we are short on... We're not short. We collected less on the total countywide delinquent collections for 2019. It's the abatement for 2017 was granted for late... It was a late application for Los Mirasoles wind farms, so the liquid collections were affected for this month. The refund, it's $243,507, but since it was deposited, we didn't give out a refund. We didn't give out a check, so the collections were $85,000. The total would have been $329,235,000 for this February. But since the late application, it affected a little bit, but anyway, it's in the deposit. We didn't give out any checks, any refunds, or anything. Okay? Any questions?
No more. Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. For the month of February, in the county clerk's office, on our vital preservation fee, we had 152 new filings, total amount of $163. Our records management was 460 new filings for a total of $5,451. We had 171 new copies for a total of $2,854.80. Records archive fee was 450 new filings for a total of $5,325. Our marriage license fee that goes to the state, we had 37 new filings for a total of Our birth, filings that go to the state, we had 117 new filings for a total of $230.40. We had, for the county clerk, 588 new filings for a total of $15,044.60. And then for our courthouse security, we had 398 new filings for a total of $578, which brings us total to 2,338 new filings for an amount of $30,914.30. For the month of February, we did pretty good, being it's a short month. We continue to improve the office, especially with, you know, getting as much as we can with copies and stuff like that. We are on track, Judge and Commissioners, to not accept cash after April 1st. I want to thank Public Relations Office, Ms. Fuentes, for putting it out on Facebook that we're going to be accepting any more cash, and she's putting all of our filing fees and stuff like that, so people have an idea of what we're filing, how much it costs to do the different things. We are in schedule to put it in the town crier probably, I believe it's this week and the following, or the following and the last week of March. So we should have that in place to not accept cash after April 1st. Any questions?
Questions? One question, Ms. Gonzalez.
Yes, sir.
At the last session, Representative Guillen introduced the bill, and it got approved, that part of the court costs from any court, JP Court, County Court, District Court, any court, that I believe it's a $40, maybe a $20 surcharge on each case, and that is earmarked for the renovation of the court, of the courthouse. Are we collecting on that?
I need to check on that, Judge. I'll check with staff to see if we are collecting it.
Okay. Mr. Pettis, I need to get that number to see how much was collected over the last two years, to see how much loan we can service in order to get the courthouse fixed or rehab. So that's an important number that we need.
I know we are working kind of a little bit with Hidalgo County. We kind of follow what they do, and speaking with the county clerk, Arturo Ojardo, I know they have brought up their fee to $36 to record, and we're still at 26, so that may be something we may look at to see in the Commissioners' Court.
This fee was... It's a bill that was passed, and it was for Willacy County and Starr County.
Okay.
Where that added number was there.
Okay.
And is strictly for fixing the courthouse.
Okay. I'll look into it with staff and let you know, sir.
It was $20? Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Projected revenues for the month of February 2019, looking at the city of Redondo, $750. The Roma Police Department, $480. The jail telephone system is $1,500. United States Marshal Services projected is $141,725... I mean, $52, sorry. Hidalgo County, $89,262 for a total of $233,744 for the projected amount of February. The account for March of 5th was 77 federal inmates, 78 Hidalgo, and a total of local inmate, 76, for a total of 231. As of this morning, we increased that population to 90 federal inmates, 76. We lowered two from Hidalgo, and for a grand total of 242 of our bed population. The difference between February 2018 and February 2019 is $20,805. Let me check. That is correct. It's $20,805 is the difference, the increase, from this same time last year. The total year-to-date collected, $1216,366. We have an additional $87,178 more than this time last year. We're at 47.15 percent amount collected, projected amount collected so far.
I do want to commend you. All this looks really good, and this report is excellent. If we continue, if you can continue with these numbers, and I hope you do, we'll end up hitting the $3 million mark, which is way above what was projected, so that's going to help a lot.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Commissioners. This is the report for February 2019. The total revenue from traffic is $201,051, and we show a decrease of $5,407 for the month of February 2019 compared to the month of February 2018. We show also a decrease of $4,960.50 for collections for the month of February 2019 compared to the month of January 2018... I'm 19, I'm sorry. And we have other collections of $694.60, and the total collection for February 2019, it's $207,96.10.
Before we continue, Judge, I just want to add that the upgrade we did with the bridge, with EZ-Tech, it is up and running, and we are producing... We are selling some, so anybody that wants to purchase, they're welcome to.
Yes.
We do have that amendment, budget amendment, for later.
We are... We just wanted to add that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, sir.
Treasure, Ms. Gonzalez.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. You have my report in front of you. This report for the record is for a month ending February 28, 2019. If you could just follow along with me. The total general fund, the ending balance, was $4,485,027. At this time last year, 2018, we had an ending balance of $2,695,739 with 37 cents, for a difference of $1,304,745 more so than last year. On the Road and Bridge Fund, we have an ending balance of $942,535 with 4 cents. At this time last year, we had $871,874 with 1 cent, with a difference of $70,661.03 more so than last year at this time. On the Enterprise Funds, we have an ending balance of $754,814 with 22 cents. Last year, we had $649,19 with 86 cents, for a difference of $105,794.36 more so as compared to last year. The Drainage District, we have ending balance of $874,939,79. At this time last year, we had $642,385 with 42 cents, a difference of $232,554 with 37 cents more so than at this time last year. This brings the grand total to $6,572,774.32. Last year at this time, we had $4,859,18 with 66 cents, a difference of $1,713,756 with 66 cents more so than last year at this time. This calculates my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Thank you.
Auditor, Mr. Pettis.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I believe you've got the report in front of you. It's a somewhat lengthy report with lots of numbers. I'm just going to highlight some of the numbers on there. Start off with the cash available, and these numbers differ a little bit from Mr. Gonzalez's in that these are reconciled balances. The cash reconciliation report shows a general fund balance of $3,902,622, Road and Bridge Fund of $866,111, and the payroll clearing account, $408,510. All of these numbers are as of February 28, 2019, which is five months into the year, the fiscal year. That would comprise 151 days out of the 365, which means that 41.37 percent of the year has elapsed. The General Fund Expenditure Report shows a year-to-date amount of $7,442,495. That comprises 42.1 percent of the budget, which is just a little above the time elapsed. The next chart shows the General Fund by departments, and the next page goes into that, and those are just a breakdown for y'all to look at. We'll go to page three, and Part Three, the Road and Bridge Fund, shows a year-to-date amount of $2,243,366, or 36.58 percent. Part Four shows the revenue reports for the General Fund and the Road and Bridge Fund as of 2/28. Again, the time elapsed is 41.37 percent. For the General Fund, we've got revenues of $9,491.29, or 53.67 percent. The Road and Bridge Fund shows a total of $3,555,695, or 57.97 percent, both of those being a little above the percentage for the year. On page five, we've got the Enterprise Fund revenues and expenditures as of 2/28. International Bridge, total revenue, $877,150, or 32.99 percent, and expenditures of $862,072, or 32.42 percent. The gas operating system, sales of $1,045,000... I'm sorry, that's the budget. Year-to-date, $421,360, or 40.32 percent. Expenditures, $374,330, or 35.82 percent. And finally, the solid waste transfer station, tipping fees of $544,480, 40.33 percent, and expenditures of $656,707, 48.63 percent. On the last page, on page six, you've got the debt owed by Starr County as of 2/28, and that total is $2,078,060. Any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Then I have my report, so... Moving on, we'll move on to item number six, and that is the vendor's list. Mr. Pettis is... Moved and second to approve. The vendor's list. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item seven is an action item, and Mr. Chapa is here to answer any questions. This is on the certification of obligations. If I understand correctly, Mr. Chapa, this is on the purchasing of the Medina Building, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. You want to elaborate?
Yeah, this is basically to approve the authorizing of the issuance, sale, and delivery of the certificative obligation. It's an order that Commissioners' Court basically would approve. We already went through the period of notifying the public, basically through the newspaper, through a notice of a letter, intending to issue the bond, and then you have 30 days after the first publication date. We already passed that, so now we're at the point of getting the authorization for the issue. Once the approval is done, then immediately we will send the document to the Attorney General for approval. The Attorney General will take about 10 business days, and once we have approval, which we anticipate from them, then we have a closing date, which will probably be a few days after that, and then we fund the obligation. So we would be looking, give or take, latter part of March or beginning of April for the final funding on.
Okay. Now, even though we're certifying the certification obligation, it's going to be funded the same way as we did the San Isidro, the Abel Gonzalez Center. It will be coming out of the Commissioner budget, but this is a process that needs to be done because the Attorney General requires that.
Yeah, it's not a specific obligation, obviously, if it's precinct, it's an obligation of the county.
Any questions?
I know it's been a while. I mean, it's just a process...
I've been waiting.
Yeah, no, it's a process that we have to go through.
It's space.
Yeah, but we have to go through the correct process, get it taken care of. I will be in contact with Mrs. Lisa Haley, just advising her that basically we're at the approval stage on the order, and then just give her a timeline as far as the aging part and the closing.
Moved and second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item eight is an action item from the Planning Department, and this is the final approval of re-subdivision of Lot 45 out of the Woodbrother Ranchettes Unit Number Two.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I'd like to present for final approval of the re-subdivision of Lot 45, the Woodbrothers Unit Two. This is under Commissioner Science's precinct. It just divided in half. It was a big area of land, and they just divided it in half, and it's ready for final approval.
I have a motion to approve the ranchettes. Second motion.
I have a motion and second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine is an action item. It's to approve a donation in the amount of $900 from John Avila to Starr County Food Pantry, precinct number two.
Motion to approve, Your Honor. Second motion.
Moved and second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 10 is also a donation to Food Pantry, precinct number four. Moved and second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. 11 is also a donation, and this is to accept lease payment in the amount of $1,000 for Ecosight.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved and second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 12 is an action item, and this is to approve waiving recording fees from the receivership on the correction deeds. I know we've been working on this for years. Let Chapa lead you.
Yeah, morning, Judge and Commissioners. I spoke to Judge Vera about this. Ms. Blanca wanted to come by the office, looking to see how we were doing with that. I believe in 2017, the Commissioners approved to waive the receivership fees of recording, and we looked at them, and there's a total of 494 corrected deeds that need to be filed. 131 have been recorded since 2017, and we still have 363 pending. So I'm asking the Commissioners' Court to waive the fees that you had originally done in 2017, so we can continue to do this, I guess, over a six-month period.
I don't know that, but I've never raised...
Okay.
Are these... These deeds are not being recorded? Are there on the tax roll or not?
I don't think they are, because they needed to be corrected, Commissioner Gasta.
And that's the reason that the county is waiving the fees, because right now, we're not collecting a penny from any one of those. Once we waive and they get recorded, now we can collect, or we can foreclose on them. So that's... We're going to lose a little bit right now, but we will gain it.
It's been a long time, at least four, five, or six years or more, and we, these people have... We even waived the taxes on the... On the... On the... All the taxes they... Which were given, so we can put them on the tax roll again.
Right.
And I thought it was already been done?
No. The receivership did a lot of them. They did the deeds and all that, but then they left, and they left boxes that were not done.
Yeah, we have 363 that's still need to do, and we can do it over the next six months, Commissioner, but we don't want to do it all at one time, because then it's going to show where we're way under, all the filings coming in, and then in the next month's report, you'll see that we didn't collect on anything.
It doesn't really matter.
I mean, well, if you want, we'll do it as soon as possible. I'm just... And I'm short-staffed right now. I mean, we'll try our best.
But what I told Mr. Gonzalez is, if you have a paying customer, take him first, and then if we don't, then do the freebie.
That's what I'm saying, but you need to get it out, so he can be on the tax roll.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 13 is to approve the South Texas SDC collection fee of 3.5. This is what we've been doing for the last couple of years.
Second.
Moved and second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 14 is a service agreement between us and Tac, and this is with Sira... This are the people of Tac Sira that pretty much run all our email accounts for the county and the state. It's the same fee, same agreement. We just need to do it every year.
Second.
Moved and second. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 15 is an action item, and this is a partnership between... To approve a partnership between the County of Starr and the Hospital District, and this is to apply for a CDPG grant for some ambulances for the hospital.
That is correct, Judge and Commissioners. We do have Mr. Gasta and Mr. Gonzalez here with the hospital. We are going to be assisting them in helping apply for these, where they are requesting... Mr. Gonzalez, you want to come and explain to us what it is that we are going to apply for?
Yes, the state has, for the first time this year, opened up a grant called the FAST Grant, which will allow us to apply for up to $500,000 for the purchases of ambulance units. If we award this grant, we're hoping to be able to purchase three new units, and then we're actively recruiting new paramedics, and in the hope of the next year, if I can get at least 10 new paramedics in, we want to open up a substation in the Escobadas area to extend our coverage with six units.
Excellent.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second motion.
A motion, second to approve, under discussion. You know, I just want to thank you all for taking the initiative to apply for this, and certainly anything that the county can do to help the hospital or any agency in the county, that's what we're here for. Thank you very much. Honorable fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 16 is also to approve a resolution for Operation Stone Garden. You'll have it before you. Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 17 is also a resolution, and this is from our District Attorney for the Violent Crime Grant. Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 18 is also requesting to approve a resolution for the Juvenile Intervention Service Grant, 387301. Is that granted? Liz, you've got anything to present? You want to say anything about that grant?
Yes, Judge. This resolution is to approve application with the Governor's Office, Federal Justice Division, for juvenile intervention services. We're going to be working, hopefully, we get this grant. It's a twofold grant. Part of the grant will be, of course, to hire somebody to coordinate the program of coordinating community service locations. So these children who are ordered to the community service hours will have a location. They'll have proper training on how to do their job at the work site, and how to behave at the work site, how to do an interview, how to do an application, and it'll also utilize... We're hoping field trips like to our local college or other entities in our area, we'll be working with a workforce to get them work-ready on how to apply for jobs. The other part of the grant is to implement a component with curriculum to teach some resiliency skills. We find that a lot of our children that get involved in the juvenile justice system lack resiliency skills, decision-making skills, anger management, things like that. We're happy to say that our referral rate is decreasing 50 to 20 percent. It's a statewide trend. It has decreased, but our aggressive, assaultive referrals have increased 20 percent over the last five years. So we're trying to deal with that type of child, dealing with aggression and anger issues that they might have. It's a twofold program. We're hoping to get it with your...
This is 100 percent grant?
Pardon me?
100 percent grant?
100 percent grant, we'll match it.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you, Liz. Item 19 is an action item, is to approve a resolution, and for the election of the Board Director for the Appraisal District, received a letter from our Chief Appraiser. There's two people that are being nominated by the Rio School District, and that's Mr. Noe Castillo and Mr. Eduardo Eddie Ramirez. And, of course, we can do with our votes as you all wish. Normally, what we do, we split them, between them, but that's whatever.
Is that the vote or nomination?
It's for the vote. The nomination had already been done. Yeah, the school district was the one that nominated those two. It was their vacancy. So, is that a motion to allow me to split them? You moved on that motion. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 20 is also an action item, and this is to authorize the negotiation with federal, state, and local governments, agencies. Let me read this. To use funds made available for the construction and fiscal barrier. I guess this is for the wall. You all have that resolution before you. Well, I don't have it. Reyna, do you know where that resolution is? Okay, you got it? Oh, okay.
These are the current proposals, just for everyone.
This is a set?
This is a set, correct.
Those are the affected areas?
Do you know the affected areas and...
Yeah, Ms. Vena, have you just approached me?
Oh, sorry.
On this thing, and what it is, it's a resolution, you know, every time they come down, it's hard to get everyone together and meet, so... Rose, you want to go ahead and...
Yeah, absolutely. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning Judge, and thank you for entertaining this resolution, and the judge is absolutely correct. Several weeks ago, with his efforts and some other local leadership, we were able to get some language into the Consolidated Appropriations Act, which required that the Department of Homeland Security negotiate with the local communities affected by the proposed barrier in Starr County before they began construction, and they gave us a timeline between now and the end of September of 2019. And so, in those efforts, what we've done is begin some very frequent dialogue with officials from multiple agencies at the federal level, and what we're asking the court today to entertain is a resolution that would allow the county judge, the Industrial Foundation, and Stark County Medical Bridge to visit in these meetings when necessary, so that if we can't get everyone together, we have an opportunity to pass the message forward. And what this proposal is, after talking to all the communities that are being affected, is essentially asking for a bulkhead flood wall that would be at the riverbank and not encroach too much in the community, along with allowing them to have a roadway, which they've requested, and in some areas they already have, that would have the necessary technology in order for it to be what they're considering an enforcement zone. And so, this simply allows the judge to be able to serve as an authority, along with us when necessary, to pass along the same message, and so that's why we're coming before the court today. And we passed along some copies of the latest maps that we've seen that affect the communities, and what we're asking is many of them are quite a distance from the river into the community, so we're asking the proposal to be for these constructions of any barrier to happen within or near the riverbank.
Rosie?
Yes, sir.
On the current code, the red card, no, what does that mean?
That means that they don't have even a right of entry from people. That means that property owner has not even allowed them to go into their property to survey or view.
Parent checks?
That means that they already have from a previous, from a previous right of entry.
And the rest of them are self-explan...
Yeah, the rest of them are basically that they're government-owned, which you'll see, those are the ones shaded in green.
So the red card, they don't have anything?
No. Yeah, what's in red are heart noses, but if you see, most of it is in yellow, which means that they have already ascertained only rights of entry, that is not construction authority, but the majority, like we know, are private property owners. And so, what we're hopeful to achieve, especially in many areas where the riverbank is 20, 30 feet from the river, is finding a way to build a bulkhead flood wall instead of the steel barrier of ballards that are being proposed currently by the federal government.
I have a motion, and a second, under discussion. Let me just add, because I do want to thank publicly, I want to thank our Congressman Henry Cuellar. A few weeks ago, when we had the government shut down, and they were negotiating the wall, Congressman Cuellar was gracious, very gracious, in allowing us to have input before they would open the government. And one of the things that we came up with was, through his guidance, is that we did not want a wall built at this time, or a fence, anywhere there was populated areas, such as Escobares, La Gruya, Roma, Rio Grande, Salineno. And the reason that was given was that we wanted, if there's going to be any type of structure, that we want it to be decorative. We don't want it to look like a prison. Laredo has that, they have a decorative structure. So because of that, we said, you know, don't build anything here, we need time to study this and negotiate with you all and see what we can come up with. Well, that is what got added to the appropriation, so what we suggested is build at the far ends, at the Hidalgo Starr County line and the Falcon Zapata County line, of course, from the lake on down. So that's what got entered into the appropriation bill. However, then the President came back and declared a state of emergency. So what's going to happen, your guess is as good as mine. I hope the state of emergency does not go through, but if it does, then it can be anywhere. You know, everything's off the plan. But again, this is just for information for you and, of course, the public. We are, you know, negotiating this thing on a daily basis. I want to thank Rose, and she's also been very active in this thing. And we'll try our best to get what's best for our community.
We will add, Judge, that there is some impending meetings from high-ranking officials from these federal agencies planned here in the next few months, prior to any of this time lapsing, and obviously, we'll keep the entire court informed as those meetings are developing to make certain that you all can join us in those meetings.
They're the board patrol station?
Yeah, yeah, they're at the board patrol here in Rio.
They've been having local meetings with the communities, and we're hopeful that during this next meeting, they already have some of the updated information. We were at one right after this law had been signed, and they still had not gotten the updates, and so the messaging may be a little different, but yeah, those mostly are with the regional and local leaders, and we're asking the Congressman, and he proposed to send some officials from Washington, so that we can ensure that the message is getting to them, and we're receiving the correct and most recent information as well.
Yeah, I do have a motion, and a second. Honorable fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Items 21 through 28 are budget amendments. Mr. Pettis, in order.
Yes, sir. Those amendments have been reviewed, they're all in order. Motion to approve, Your Honor. Nailed it.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. Honorable fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. It is, I think that, 1145, pursuant to Section 551. It is 1045. Monday? It is?
1045.
I guess I gained an hour. It's 1045, pursuant to Section 551.074. We will now move into executive session to discuss order of salaries. It's 1125, and we're back in open session. The only item we discussed was order of salaries.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved in second to approve order of salaries as presented. Honorable fair, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved in second, Honorable fair, please aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.